If we can reconvene our meeting to open sessions, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss two tenure recommendations, a contractual matter, a student matter, and a legal issue. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Catherine Natto.
Robert Tejin.
Jody Minnell.
Holly Dellenbach.
Ewan McKnight.
John Walston.
John McPhillips.
And Lauren Grasso is joining us by Zoom this evening. First, I just wanted to thank Hammergrail for hosting us this evening. It's always fun to be out and about in our different buildings. And second, I'm pretty sure we have some pig or supa students with us this evening. Your obligation is to stay until the meeting is over or nine o'clock, whichever one comes first. And when you, before you leave, make sure you come up and sign out on one of the sign out sheets that's up here so that you get credit for being here. First is the approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the November sixth, 2024 regular board meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? That carries. Item three, meeting reports. First is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I did want to follow up on our safety forum that we held last Thursday evening. The middle school PTO hosted this district-wide event. It included a presentation on district safety measures, also a Q and A with some of our district administrators, members of the Bethlehem Police Department, and representatives from the FBI. There is a recap of that on our website. There were approximately sixty parents who attended the meeting, and I want to thank everyone who did participate and the PTO for hosting the event. I think the people who came appreciated the information that was shared. I'd also like to congratulate our fall athletes. They will be recognized at our next meeting. We had a lot of success this fall, including our girls cross-country who won the state championships and other teams who also went to the state championships. So Mr. Keys will be recognizing them with the board next meeting. And finally, we are kicking off our sharing and caring program that we hold every year at this time. All schools are collecting shelf-stable food items to support the sharing and caring program through December twelfth. There's a list of items that we're collecting. If you want to donate to certain schools, some of them are classroom-specific, so all classroom, you know, this classroom is going to collect juice boxes. This is doing that, so check with them. But we also are hosting a drive-up drop-off day for food donations at the high school on Friday, December sixth. And that's anytime between nine AM to eleven AM for people who just want to bring any of those items to the high school and drop them off, and we'll have people there to pick that up. Also, if you're a community member or business who'd like to make a cash or gift card donation, you can contact our Student Support Services. Sherry Fitzpatrick in there is the one who coordinates that. And our pickup time, if you are a family in the district who could use assistance, please contact your child's either school counselor or nurse. And the pickup time will be on Saturday, December fourteenth at the high school. So, and that's my report for this evening.
Any questions for Jody? Next is our board report and discussion. I just wanted to echo Jody's comments about the safety forum. Lauren and I were there, and it seemed like it was pretty well-attended and well-received, so thank you to the organizers of that. Since our last meeting, we did have our first meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee to start to look through essentially the district's strategic plan and the goals. And I thought that was, it was a good meeting, and we'll be meeting again in December. Wanted to congratulate all of the students that were involved with the cabaret at the high school. And that was very, that was well-received, and it's always, always a fun night. Mark your calendars for Radium Girls, which is coming up at the high school, the weekend of December thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth. I think you probably had an email about tickets or about how to get those. And the last thing that I had, I was able to visit Slingerlands the, earlier this week, and was able to visit an ENL classroom and a COTAW classroom to kind of get an idea of how those work. And so that was very, it was very valuable for me, so if you guys haven't had a chance yet to do a school visit, then definitely reach out to Brittany for help scheduling. Anybody have anything else that they wanted to share?
I just want to throw in my two cents on the safety forum as well. It was just so very well done, and the, I was really grateful to the Bethlehem Chief of Police, the FBI, and all of our administrators and folks who came out to share information, you know, answer questions, and just help to explain how we address these things in our schools. Because it certainly was an unsettling time, and it was really good to hear about how we're thinking about this and how we're thinking about addressing any future needs as well. So, thank you very much, Jody, and to your whole team.
I was going to echo your comment on many of the sports teams, boys soccer, girls cross-country is probably the outstanding one, but it's been a lot of success. It's been nice to watch.
Next on the agenda are our student reports. Do we have anybody here from the high school Student Senate? You want to come up to the microphone?
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Niar, and I'm a senior student senator. Last week, we welcomed eight freshman senators. We decided to change the number to get more people involved. Normally, it's six. Today, we held a meeting to discuss our upcoming holiday food drive, and Stuart has offered to donate a certain amount for the ice cream. And Senate will pay for the rest when we reach our goal for the whole school. And then the slogan for the food drive that we have come up with is "Cream for the Crop," and it starts December twelfth to December, I mean, December second to December twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Anybody here from the middle school?
The holiday caring and sharing food drive is running now. We want to thank all in our community who have made donations and remind all that all of our donations stay right here in our community to help members in our community.
Our Be the Change Club is conducting a coat drive that is ongoing, and all donations will benefit the Albany West Hills Refugee Center. Once again, we thank all in our community who have made donations.
We want to again congratulate our Versity Girls Cross Country Team who won the New York State title and give, and give a special shout-out to our BCMS classmate Sophie C., who came in eighth overall at the state meet and third for our BC team to help encourage the title. We wish them all luck at Nationals in Origin.
Our No Shade November fundraiser for cancer research is underway. Anyone wanting to make a donation online can search for the Alex G. Duncan Foundation, and thank you for your support.
Six hundred eighty students at BCMS completed their character strength survey last week. It was actually more, but a Google glitch caused some disruptions to one of our grade levels. Any student whose results did not process can resubmit the form in home base now that it is complete. All staff and students can order one free character T-shirt.
The character T-shirts have the high school's Be the Change logo on the front and the character strength of your choice printed on the back.
If any of our board members or central office administrators would like to order a T-shirt, Dr. Klugman sent the ordering link to the Superintendent Monroe earlier today. Fingers crossed that the shirts arrive prior to the holidays.
The BCMS phys ed staff had our, held our annual turkey trot today after school, and we had a great turnout. And we want to thank our teachers and all those who showed up to participate.
As our construction is coming to a close on our refurbished auditorium, we want to express our thanks and appreciation for all who were responsible. The space looks beautiful, and some of our student groups have already begun to take advantage of it in advance of our December concert cycle. We wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and we're grateful for all that you do to help our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The link for the T-shirts will be in the board updates Friday.
Okay. Do we get to, do we get to pick our own character strength for the back? And I think we have some friends from Hammergrail.
Good evening, my name is Amelia.
Good evening, my name is Ellie.
Good evening, my name is Naomi.
Good evening, my name is Stoffy.
Good evening, my name is Cristobal.
Good evening, my name is Iona.
Good eve, good evening, my name's Walter.
We are here tonight to tell you about a time capsule that we recently opened. Time capsules are artifacts that remind us of the past and what was important during that time that it was created.
The time, the time capsule we opened was created on June seventh, nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one. It was planted by the PTA in honor of the dedication of building the new wing of the school. It wasn't until construction of our new pit area this summer that the time capsule was found.
You may be wondering what we found when we opened the time capsule? We discovered a note from the PTA Vice President at the time, who was Susan Cohen Volo. We also found a yearbook from nineteen ninety-one.
Also in the capsule, we found copies of several newspapers to tell us what was happening in the world at that time in a Hammergrail sweatshirt.
What does Hammergrail mean to us? It means a fresh start and kindness.
It also means friendship, a welcoming environment, and fun.
So where do we go from here? We plan to create a new time capsule for our future Hammergrail students to discover items that our student, items that our students decided that should be included in, in it, that show what is important to us in twenty twenty-four. Our one, one of our lunch menus, a turkey trot ribbon and a heart challenge duck.
Also, a copy of last year's yearbook, photos of current students in a Hammergrail T-shirt. We would like to ask our Board of Education members to sign the T-shirt to record this part of our school's history.
We will also include a kids helping kids permission slip to participate in the children's holiday program to benefit Unity House to show our support for the community service. And finally, a fifth grade photo to share with the future Hammergrail students.
That's great. Thank you guys for sharing. Who's going to come up? If you guys come up here and see me, I'll give you a special pin for coming and talking to us.
Nice job.
Thank you. Come on over. Yes, I am. You can wait your turn.
Nice job, girls.
Thank you.
Did you put a date on it?
Yeah.
Not today, I just put a twenty-four.
The T-shirt's going to come around this way for us all to sign. I'll wait just a second for our... Next on the agenda are presentations. We have two presentations this evening, and the first is on win blocks, what I need blocks.
Meredith.
Good evening. And we also know what the list stands for, as we know we like acronyms in education. We're here tonight to present on win block, and before I get started, I'd like to thank everyone, mostly the second grade team for coming out tonight and sacrificing some of our family time, but also for being pioneers of us in the district and for trying to catch on to the high schools. As always, we kind of grabbed a little review of our mission team and our four pillars. And so I'm going to just talk quickly about setting the stage for win and how it looks leading up to what will be done this fall. So with a lot of work happening over the summer, researching and structural strategies to meet the diverse needs of students. As we mentioned earlier, you know, education's ever-changing, and the needs of students are varied across the board, and we really want to research and work in common to meet those needs of the students. Truly, one of my biggest lifts is building a master schedule, so I build a schedule each year and finding time that I can build where grade levels such as second grade can have common planning time, which means they have time throughout the day where they can meet and talk about kids. That was a big part of it this summer. Like I said, each building now is doing a win block on varying skills. The one you'll hear about tonight is in math, but then you're doing ELA in other subject areas. And as I said, our second grade team here was the first team to pilot this in the fall. The best thing about win and really the setting the stage for is finding out ways our students, I'm sorry, finding out what our students need by using multiple forms of data. So it's really important we have a clear criteria of what we're looking for and using data to inform what they need and not making assumptions about what they need, but really knowing truly what they need. And lastly, from my perspective, from a building leader perspective, we've been talking a lot about teacher collective efficacy this year in my building. And that's just a shared belief that we can make a difference with student achievement. And I think these teachers tonight have shared and shown that when we meet together and talk about kids and critically think about what they need, really great things can happen. And so I'm really excited about this work and excited to share more about it with you all today.
So what is win time anyway? Win time, what I need, is a personalized learning time that allows teachers to provide direct explicit instruction tailored to what students need in that moment. And they, once that is decided what they're going to do, then we follow with small group partner and independent activities. The team meets to plan every other week. The teachers, Allison and I, we meet and we review data. We meet and assess students' needs and check in on how they've progressed through progress monitoring. And that instruction is tailored based on what the students need. They typically meet with groups thirty minutes, three days a week, and students practice and improve specific skills. So I'm going to talk to you specifically about the win cycle here at Hammergrail. So starting in September, we wanted to take a look at data in math and see if there was a specific skill that all of the second graders really needed to work on. So when we looked at all, we looked at iReady and we looked at the work they were doing in the classroom. We looked across all of them. We thought, okay, addition facts. Fact fluency was really a skill that our students needed some extra support with. So we used two different assessments. We used one, which was a computer-based assessment, which is first in math. You may know about that. And the students took a five-minute quick assessment with that. And then we also did old-school paper and pencil mad minute to see if there was maybe a discrepancy between the two. And we really were able to take a look at those numbers and look at the skills and figure out what groups we were going to make. So one group, we realized of students, they had not mastered addition facts within ten. Okay, so we knew we needed that group there. Then we had a group of students who they had mastered that, but they hadn't really mastered the addition facts within twenty. So we said, okay, that looks like that could be another group. Then we had a group of students, they had mastered those facts. And so we said, this looks like a group where we really need to extend their learning. They had mastered the facts, so what are we going to do? So we thought, okay, let's build upon that knowledge. They have these facts mastered. Let's make sure they can apply them. So another group takes that knowledge and takes their facts and applies it to word problems, logic problems, math puzzles, things like that. The great thing about it is that these groups are flexible. So, and I'm going to talk to you in a minute about something called progress monitoring. So although we divide these students into three separate groups and they switch among the three teachers, these groups are very fluid and they can change again because it's very based, it's based just on the skills that they need. So that brings us to progress monitoring. So progress monitoring is a really important part of win for two very important reasons. One, the most obvious, we have to monitor their progress. Are they making progress within these skills? The other important part of progress monitoring, which we do bi-weekly, is we have to make sure what we're doing during that intervention time, is it working? Because if it is not working, then we need to get together, we need to talk, we need to maybe make some shifts, try some different methods and see what's working. So again, we did that every two weeks. So we started off again, we had our initial assessment to get our baseline. Then after two, two weeks, we said, okay, we're going to take another timed test. We decided as a team that we would do another mad minute. I was lucky enough to score them and as I'm scoring them, I'm noticing I'm getting a lot of perfect scores on these tests. I'm thinking they did really well. So our kids did a really nice job. We made, and I say we, they and the kids made substantial growth within those two weeks. So after the two weeks of progress monitoring, we got together as a team, let's take a look at this. We said, you know, now we have about seventy-five percent of our second graders had mastered their facts. Do we stick with addition or do we move ahead to subtraction? So we said, let's move ahead to subtraction. So again, you have to get a baseline. So we give them a test. Then after two weeks, you shuffle the deck. So the groups all change, right? So some kids are in one group, another, another. And then you work again, split into groups and they'll talk a little bit in a minute about what they do. And then again, you do work, they go into these groups. After two weeks, we progress monitor. We just met yesterday, was it? I think we just met yesterday. And again, really amazing results where our kids made unbelievable improvements. So now we have to start the goal-setting progress again. I think the biggest thing is that we, as their teachers, we really celebrate their progress. But I think the most important part of this is that the students are celebrating their own progress. That's the most important. They're starting to set goals for themselves. They're starting to see that their hard work pays off, that practicing their facts, they're state, they're looking and saying, wow, I'm doing so much better. I did this on this week, but now I'm doing even so much better. And that's really what we celebrate the most. So again, I talked a little bit about that. We do adjust the groupings a lot. And I think that's about it. I think Jen's going to come up. Jen is one of our second grade teachers. She will talk to you more specifically about the activities they did when they split into those three groups.
So what does this look like in our classrooms? So based on our students that are really learning those facts within ten, this is our most intensive support. These students are really working with manipulatives. They're using counters and ten frames. And then they're taking what they're learning and they're using those manipulatives to apply them to games. Our students that needed some extra practice, they're working within that twenty. These students are moving away from our manipulatives. They are using hundreds charts as needed, more for visual support. Some students are using them, some don't need them at this point. They're looking deeper at number patterns. So how can we learn a math fact really automatic using things like our doubles facts? Or can we see a doubles plus one fact? So this group of students are really starting to think a little bit deeper about some of those strategies. Our students that are extending their skills, they are learning more mental math strategies. There's more discussions around which strategy are you choosing to use and why do you think that one is best? They're doing things with more open-ended math tasks. There's more discussion and moving around that classroom. And all groups are really working on and introduced to what a timed fact practice looks like and how this is exciting and we're all working on our own goals and it's not anything scary or stressful. And so like Allison was saying, they are really starting to goal set and see the growth from this was their pre-test score. And like, wow, look at how much we grew. And so that's been pretty incredible in second grade. Each of our groups, we try our best to make this as entertaining and exciting as possible. So they are getting an additional thirty minutes of math each day, three times a week. And so they have their core math and so this is just like an added math time. So we really try to use math games to keep it exciting and fresh for them. They love to incorporate technology at times. All groups, we really are working on creating that positive and supportive environment. It's really exciting for them because they're mixed in with all of their friends. So students from my class get to work with students in Ms. Wooster and Ms. Solmanson's class and they love that. And that's really great for us as teachers too, because we've really built relationships with all the second graders this year. And then this is a great time within this win time to really provide students with immediate feedback and encouragement. So group sizes are a little bit smaller. There's more time to sort of, within those games, move around the room, conference, check in with students, talk to them, what strategy are you using? Why do you think that's a good strategy? And then provide them with some feedback right on the spot. So I feel like the most exciting part is getting to see what it looks like in action. So we have a video for you so you can see what this looks like in our rooms.
What do you like about win time?
I like the games. I like the math. I like the fun and I'm assigned to sit with my best friend.
Oh, win time.
I like that you get to like be with other classes.
I like win time because we can be partnerships.
Win time.
I like win time because it's a great time for them to practice skills and boost their self-confidence. They enjoy the extra math time.
I think win time's a great opportunity for students to switch classrooms, to build relationships with other peers within our grade. And then same for teachers to build relationships amongst all the second graders.
And one thing that I love about win time is the excitement that students have when they're coming into the room. They're excited to start, they're excited to learn, and they're really excited to work with one another.
And before we open up to questions, I just wanted to reiterate that although they're making it look very easy, this is a lift. It's a commitment and they have a learner's mindset. And I think our kids now in second grade especially are really just wrapping onto that. And so it's really been a productive few months of win and we're excited to see where we can move forward. And also exciting to see what the district is really latching onto this movement. With that though, if there are questions, I think Allison and Jen and I are here for questions.
I do. Yeah, I probably just missed this, but do all the kids participate in the win time?
Yeah, all second grade.
Thank you.
And then it's, this is a pilot program here this year. I'm hearing, is this the first year that you've done this? Is that right?
This is the first year we've done this model. There are teachers across, I used to do win time, but within my own first grade classroom.
Yeah.
And so this is the first time we've piloted where they are doing this. But we do have other grades in other buildings. We have a win pi, a win group at Eagle. There is third grade working on morphology. We have second grade now Eagle has kind of caught on to success. So they are also going to work on fact fluency. Fifth grade here has decided to do a win block. They will also be working on something within math. Elwes Mira is going to do math. I think almost every building has one. It's scary at first though.
Really?
Because they think like, this is kind of overwhelming. Am I going to be able to do it? So thankfully, they did such a great job that people are starting to hear more and more about it.
Oh, well, thank you for making this happen and making it work and setting a model for how, how to roll this out at a, at an entire grade level. Level. Sounds, it sounds really wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing this with us. Appreciate it. Our next presentation this evening is our academic update by Dave Hurst.
Thank you. So it's that time of year again where I get to share all of our student successes in terms of academics across the K-12 spectrum. And obviously, this presentation every year, just like the one on win time, is rooted in our mission statement and our core values. So quickly, I'll just recap our enrollment. I know we talk about this a few times during the year, particularly during budget season. But we also talk about it during the academic update, just to point out sort of how appreciative we are that we are able to maintain such healthy class sizes, K-12. At the primary level, we're typically eighteen to nineteen students a classroom. At the intermediate level, we are more twenty to twenty-one. And then when we get into the middle school, typically twenty-one to twenty-two. And then at the high school, it actually goes down a little bit. This is a little bit trickier because courses are so overlapping in terms of grades. But I just sort of did the best I could to take courses that are strictly freshman courses, strictly sophomore and so forth. And only looked at the core courses to come up with an average size. And again, it hovers nineteen to twenty. So we have very, very healthy class sizes, which again allows our teachers to do things like win time. Even though, even if you're not doing it across a grade level, you can certainly do it within your own classroom regardless of the level K-12. When you only have twenty students in your classroom, it's very easy to set up four groups of five as opposed to when you have twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty, thirty-two kids. It's very, very difficult to differentiate at that level. So we're very appreciative to the support of being able to keep the FTE at a healthy level to be able to have class sizes in this nature. So assessments is a big part of the update, obviously. So as you know, the state testing program has been along, around for quite some time now. It's reported out on four levels. Levels three and four are what the state considers as proficient. Level three is like grade level proficient and then level four is you sort of exceed the expectations of the grade level. And just looking again over time, so we now sort of have three years prior to COVID, three years post-COVID to look at in terms of ELA. And you can see there's very minimal difference when you go from year to year. So as I talked about in prior years, this whole idea of sort of learning laws, the COVID slide, we really never saw that. Our students are performing pretty much at the same historical levels as they were before. And actually in ELA, if you look, we are now actually have more students performing at the highest level than we had pre-COVID. So very, very encouraging. Similar story with math. Nope, there we go. I think the video messed me up. Okay. Similar story with math, overall, very similar levels. The one shift we're seeing the last couple of years, they did change the assessment two years ago, but we are seeing fewer of our students at the highest level. So that's something we're working on to make sure that our curriculum is not only getting our students at proficiency, but to exceed grade level expectation. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about this on a global level. The next group of slides after this really gets into like every grade level in more detail. And because I know you have this presentation, I'm just going to kind of gloss over those and you can sort of peruse those at your own leisure. But just in general, you can see that, you know, our ELA and math numbers this year, I will say that they pretty much align well with historical numbers. When we get and talk about how we compare to the rest of the state, we're at about the ninety-second percentile when you're looking at proficiency levels for ELA. And we're at the eighty-seventh percentile when you're looking at math. And both of those year to year remain very, very consistent. I do think it's important to look at cohorts because you do get fluctuations. You're like, wow, this year, grade three went way down compared to last year or grade four went way down. But it's really when you look at a group of students and say, well, how did they as a group perform over the last three years? So to give you an idea of the way this works, when I'm looking at the class of twenty twenty-eight, that's our current freshman class, our current ninth graders. So the three bars represent, so the blue one is the test they took last year in eighth grade. The green is the test they took in seventh grade and the orange or the yellow is the test they took in sixth grade. So this is the same group of students. We're looking at proficiency levels over time. And you can see there's, outside of the class of twenty twenty-nine, it had a huge spike this last year. And you can see there's, outside of the class of 2029, it had a huge spike this last year. Most of them, right, they perform consistently over time. And I think this is more, a more important measure than just looking at like, oh, our fourth grade numbers are kind of going up and down from year to year. We're talking about different kids. When I look at the class of 2030, right, they're consistently at about that 60% proficiency level. It doesn't matter whether they took the test in fifth grade, sixth grade, or seventh grade. As a cohort, they're performing at the same level. And you'll see the same thing can be said for math, right? Consistently, students are performing at the same level, year in and year out, right? So when you're looking at sort of ups and downs on a particular grade level, that's because you have different cohorts coming in and out, strong cohort, weaker cohort, medium cohort. But as long as you look historically at that cohort and they're maintaining or growing, then that's really what we want to look at. So more specifically, again, here are the English Language Arts numbers that I just presented, but just at a more, you can see the five-year level. And you can see that when we go from grade level to grade level, for the most part, they stay pretty consistent. There's some fluctuation, but again, when you look at the cohorts, there's sort of no reason, sort of for alarm there. As you know, we have two sort of testing measures. We have the I-Radi that we administer three times a year, and we have the New York State testing that we can look at end of year. They're not apples to apples, right? So I-Radi only tests reading, whereas the state test covers reading and writing. So there's a little bit of difference. But I think you can see that, and I-Radi has five levels of proficiency, whereas the New York State program only has four. So it's not, you can't compare them entirely. But I think the easiest way to look is when you look at sort of the red, like the two reds together on the I-Radi, the light red and the dark red, pretty well align with what the New York State assessments are saying in terms of dark red, right? When you look at the yellows, you really have to look at sort of the, the light yellow on I-Radi and kind of like half of the light yellow and, or light green. Because you're, just the way you have early on and then mid or above grade level when it comes to the green. So some of those students, when it comes to the state test. But when you look across, very, very good alignment. So what does that mean? Well, that means that we're, we can use the I-Radi assessments to sort of predict where students are going to land. So I just ran, took two different ones. I did grades four and eight. But you can see that you have a correlation coefficient of .8, which is a very strong positive correlation. Again, we're just talking about trying to make testing predictions. This isn't like medical science where we want a .95 correlation, right? .8 is really good when you're talking about, does test A do a good job of predicting test B? So we're very happy that our I-Radi testing is telling the same story essentially as the state test. So we're able to, when we take our fall assessments and our mid-year assessments, we're able to sort of predict where students are going to be at the end of the year. And that's what allows us to do that differentiation within the classroom, to be able to make sure that we're getting the students, the skills that they need to become proficient at the end of the year. And same thing for grade A, ELA, slightly lower level of confidence, .74 correlation coefficient. But again, that's strong enough for us to say, okay, these measures are highly correlated. Math, very similar story. Again, from year to year, you can see very consistent. Every once in a while, you have a blip. But again, when you look at the cohorts, they're staying within their sort of cohort. The one thing I will say is grade seven and eight, we still have a very high opt-out rate at the middle school. That's also, don't forget, we have a good chunk of our students taking Regents exams at that point. So the numbers are somewhat skewed when you look at just the New York State testing. Not so much in seventh grade, because we only have about 20% of our students taking the Regents. But, so when you look at like the adjusted, our percentile rating goes way up. But in grade eight, you know, we've only got 40% of our students taking it, because 21% are opting out, almost 40% are also taking the Regents exam. So you can see our percentile did jump up quite a bit this year. We're back to sort of norm. We were always in the sort of the 70th to 80th percentile. But when you throw in the students that did take the Regents exam, it pushes up even higher. Similar correlation with I-Radi versus New York State, you can see in this view. And actually, the correlation is much stronger. It's .9 basically for grade four and .8 for grade eight math. So again, doing a really good job of predicting how students are going to perform on the state tests. Science, whole new ballgame last year. They completely revamped the system. If you recall, tests used to be in fourth and eighth grade. There was a laboratory component, and then, which was the same for the last 20 years. So pretty much every kid got 100 on it because they knew exactly what they were going to have to do. And then there was a written component. So they've changed that, now it's grades five and eight. The laboratory component is actually done sort of over time. So there's, in third, fourth, and fifth grade, there are a set of labs that students have to do over those three years, that just sort of, it's not part of a score in this test, but they just have to complete those labs before they sit for the test. Same thing with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. There's a set of labs that the students do, then they sit for the test. So there's no scoring component on these in terms of this. You can see our proficiency rating went way down. We're usually in the 90% for proficiency. Well, you can see statewide proficiency at grade five was horrible. The listservs blew up in the spring about this test. It was taking kids four hours to complete. The readability was somewhere in the seventh and eighth grade range. So there's a lot of challenges around this test. So even when you look at the 56%, you're like, ooh, that's not very good. But we're in the 89th percentile. And when you look at our mean scale score, we're in the 92nd percentile. So comparatively, we still did very, very well. We know we have some work to do, and we've pinpointed some things we can work on. But first year this test was ever given also. Grade eight, totally different story. Even though we only had 77% proficiency, again, you're probably like, whoa, 98th percentile, and our scale score is 99th percentile. So like, we're doing awesome in science. Regents exams, we continue to do extremely, extremely well. When you look at our, on average, for our Regents exams, we're in the 92nd percentile for passing rate, which sounds impressive. But I think it's, what's most impressive is our mastery rate, which is kids getting 85 or higher. On average, we're in the 96th percentile. When you look at individual exams, the two that typically stand out are the geometry and algebra in terms of proficiency, we're in the 82nd, 86th percentile. But I want to remind everyone that we have far greater percentage of students taking those exams at many other schools. A lot of schools after algebra, kids that don't perform at a certain level, they're kind of like, you're done with Regents exams. Like you've taken your one required one, we're not going to move you on. Our goal is to get as many students through all three exams as we can. So we have courses set up to help kids get through that. So we have a higher percentage of students getting through the exams, which when you expose a higher percentage, obviously, your rate's going to drop slightly. But our mastery rate is outstanding across the board. AP results, this is another area where we really get to sort of, you know, celebrate our student successes. The number of students taking these exams goes up every year. We're averaging now, each student that does take exam typically takes two exams on average. Our scores far surpass New York State and worldwide counts. But what's even more impressive is that we do not have a sort of selective process in terms of taking AP. As long as you meet the prerequisite requirements, like you can't take calculus if you didn't get through pre-calculus type thing, right? You can sign up for these courses. And you can see the percentage of our students taking APs has gradually increased from 30% back in 2020 up to 37%. And that number's going to push into the 40% this year because we've introduced AP pre-calculus now, which is a new course that's just going to capture a lot more students. So our percentage of students scoring three, we typically write at 90%. We've actually surpassed that this past year. And you can see that the percentage of students taking exams are up over 60% now of students scoring three or higher when they graduate. And this is us in comparison to the rest of the suburban council. And this is something that, again, is just a testament to our students' willingness to push themselves and self-challenge. We have over 55% of our students, and this is always on a two-year lag just because of the way it's reported. But we have over 55% of our students taking exams back in 2021, 22, and close to 50% of them getting three or higher. That pushes our, our percent of kids getting three or higher is almost in line with the next best school in terms of their participation rate, right? So not only do we have more students taking than anybody else percentage-wise, but our percentage of passing far surpasses as well. And this just points to like, open enrollment works. Like letting kids challenge themselves to take courses works. I'm not going to name names, but there's some schools on this list here that like, if you don't have a 90 in this certain course, you're not taking an AP course. And their results don't come close to ours. So these strict requirements in terms of having to maintain a certain grade in the prerequisite courses, I think this highlights very clearly that that doesn't necessarily work. Our graduation rate, there was a slight uptick this year. We're up to 96%. We were like 95 and change last year. Again, this is something we're always looking out, the, we're always looking at. Obviously, our students that are dropping out, we have eight. And then the still enrolled are typically our special education students that are with us till they're 21. So this is a discussion that we began having last year in terms of sort of process. And I did present a few items last year on this. But just to kind of, sort of rehash what the curriculum council process looks like, this is at the high school. So the first step is a course or a program development. This happens at the teacher level, right? So either a single teacher or a group of teachers gets together and say, hey, we've got this idea for a course, and they put a proposal together. They bring that proposal then to their department. They discuss it within their department. And their department says, you know what, that's a great proposal, let's move it on to curriculum council. Curriculum council then meets to review these proposals. And after they have a chance to sort of vet them and they have discussion, it moves to a vote. Once the curriculum council votes, anything that they vote in favor of then moves to you all for final approval. And that's what you'll see on the agenda tonight. There's a memo from Dave DeMau requesting approval for new courses and elimination of courses. And I'll run through those very quickly. So the English Language Arts department at the high school is recommending two new courses, The Story of Rock and Roll and Criticism in Film. And in adding these courses, this is based on sort of student interest and a history of other courses that have not run over the past few years. So in adding these two courses, they're actually removing detective fiction, sci-fi fantasy, survey of Shakespeare, and theater arts from the program of studies as those have not run. And these are courses that students have expressed an interest in. One in particular, Criticism in Film. If you know, we already have a course in pop lit and film. This is sort of an extension of that course that gets much more into the critical and deep analysis of these genres. For math, we're introducing four new courses, they're all semester courses. And this is something we're doing, we've been collaborating with Dr. Abdullah Kanbaz at U Albany. He runs their E-Tech Center, the AI component of it. And this is something, if you're following any of Joe Bowler's work out of Stanford, this idea of data science is something that's becoming very, very popular. Because historically, the way math departments have run and schools have run is that the trajectory of coursework always leads to calculus, right? It's algebra, geometry, algebra II, pre-calculus, calculus. Like calculus was always this like gold standard. More recently, students have sort of navigated towards like AP statistics, say, as either an add-on or an alternative. These are other pathways for students to follow, right? So some students will choose these as electives on top of another math class. Some students might, after they finish Algebra I, decide that this is a more appealing pathway to me than the traditional pathway. And it's not to say this isn't a rigorous pathway. It involves obviously high-level math concepts. It involves computer programming. But the courses are being developed really where you only need to have an algebra skillset in order to be successful in these courses. So there's four in all. Basically, you would take these two, Semester One, Semester Two. And if these are things that were interesting to you, you then might move on to something like Machine Learning Basics and Advanced Topics and Data Science. And then we're also introducing, and this kind of goes along with the idea of, we're talking about adding like sort of micro-credentialing to diplomas. And this is something, when I talk about the Blue Ribbon Commission, that they are sort of starting to recommend. So if a student completed all of four of these courses, we could put, give them a little special seal saying that you're, have an endorsement in data science, right? Similar to we have the Seal of Biliteracy, we have the Seal of Civic Readiness. We could have the Seal of, it'd be only something we do, but the Seal of, say, data science. As I presented last year, at this time, we're also looking at a phase-out plan for the lab school. This is just a continuation of the work. So currently, all of the lab school courses are still in the program of studies, even though we're not running a ninth grade cohort this year. So the recommendation from curriculum council was to remove all of the ninth and 10th grade coursework as they will not be offered next year. Then the following year, they would remove 11, and the following year, 12, which would then phase out that program. So this is something I added this year based on, if you're, Kristin Connor did a presentation back in the fall and Ewan asked questions about, are we tracking students once they get into college? So we are now, I subscribe to something, National Student Clearinghouse, which grabs data from all of the colleges. I should, I say all the colleges, only about 93% actually report on time. So there's sometimes a lag on the reporting. But it allows us to follow our students over time, right? So I have just a few quick graphs to kind of point out some highlights. So we have, you know, anywhere between 82 and 80, or 90% of our students attending college immediately in the fall after high school. So again, some students wait a year, some students wait a semester. But on average, we've got about 85% of our students attend college immediately after high school. And about 70% of them go to four-year institutions and about, well, about 75%, I guess. And then about 25% or so go to two-year institutions. These are the colleges that our students are choosing. So this is going back to 2017. This is the list of top 20. So you can see by and large, our students are staying close to home, right? But these, this is the most attended colleges since 2017. So then I think this is the slide really that Ewan was getting at. I'm only looking, this is four years post-graduation. I can also get five years, six years, which most colleges now are looking at five and six years. But just to give you an idea of what our students are doing four years out. And the reason I chose just to do four years, because 2020, at least I can talk about, because they're four years out now. Otherwise, my graph would get smaller and smaller in terms of who we can talk about. So this at least gives us four cohorts worth of students to talk about. So the class, high school class of 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, where were they four years after graduation, right? So the biggest bar represents, Lauren's covering my key, but the biggest bar represents students that graduated, right, from their institutions. So roughly 60% on average, right, graduated in four years. About 20% persisted, meaning they're still in school. You've got a small portion that returned after a stopout. So they might have left for a year and then came back, or a semester. You do have about 10%, 11% that are no longer enrolled but did not graduate. So like, those would be considered, I guess, your dropouts. And then you have your not in the S, NSC to date. So that's your National Student Clearinghouse. And again, this, there's two factors here. One, it's reliant upon colleges actually submitting their data to NSC, which some are not great at. The other is students that have FERPA waivers. So if you, when you go to college, if you sign a FERPA waiver saying you can't share my data with anybody, then obviously, we don't have access to know what that student did. But the number's fairly small. We're getting a really good sample of what our students are doing post-graduation. So this is something that I will be happy to report out on a more regular basis going forward. The last thing I want to talk about is the Blue Ribbon Commission from New York State. There's been a lot of talk about this. I think the thing that catches the most headlines is Regents exams are going away. That's not true entirely. They're going away for some students, right? I would envision that 90% or more of our students are still going to take the Regents exams as their path to graduation. Because some of the other paths, quite honestly, don't fit the profile of the courses our students take, right? And the things that you're going to have to do alternative to Regents exams are not appealing to a lot of students, right? So like portfolio-based things. I think that the area that this is going to help our students the most in is our students that do CTE, right? Because one of the challenges you have now is a student that's in, say, a CTE welding program, they can pass a very, very rigorous national examination in welding, be credentialed in welding, be able to go away and make a ton of money. But because they couldn't get through the Global Studies Regents, they can't graduate high school. Well, these alternate pathways are going to be, at least one of the proposals would be, well, if you pass one of these CTE endorsement tests, you know, you're good to go. So that's the type of student that I think is going to impact the most. Some of our special education students that struggle with passing all five exams. But by and large, you see 95% of our students pass all the exams. So I don't know that they're necessarily going to be looking to deviate from that. You might have some that use APs in place of that, but I don't think we're going to see a huge shift. So the state's put out this sort of timeline, where right now, we're in planning mode for a whole year. Then we're going to take two years to install it and sort of partially implement. And then we're not going to fully implement till 2029 plus, because I think they even recognize 2029 might be a little bit ambitious. Because you can't just say like wholesale, we're changing things. Because students that are already in a sort of pathway, it's probably not going to impact them, right? Like if you're already in 11th grade and they announce all these changes, like you're probably already so far along in whatever program you're in that it's going to be hard to adhere to one of these new pathways. So my guess is it's going to kind of be a scale-up thing. So this summer, these are the things that are talked through this summer. These are the things that the state's talking about. Are there ways that we can exempt students for major life events? They're developing what's called a Portrait of a Graduate, so like what should every student that exits a school in New York, what skills should they possess? They're establishing support networks for schools to work, to sort of develop these local requirements that fit the one diploma for all criteria. Then, when we move into next fall, again, they're gonna finalize this Portrait of a Graduate. They're gonna finalize learning expectations, continue to work with support networks. Continuing along, the goal is to have one diploma, so right now, as you know, we have like, you know, Regents diploma, Regents diploma with honors, Regents diploma with distinction, advanced Regents diploma, math credential, STEM credential, ELA credential, humanities credential, all these different things. It's gonna be one diploma, right? And there's gonna be a sort of a minimum requirement for that diploma. And schools cannot, one of the things that they're doing is schools are not gonna be able to add on to that. So what some schools do now is, even though it's only required to have four years of English, four years of social studies, three years of math, three years of science, some schools are saying, you have to have four of all three, four of all four, in order to graduate from our high school. So you're putting additional requirements on students. You're not going to be able to do that in the future, right? We don't do that, I'm just, but there are schools that do that. Or they might have other additional requirements that are not part of what the state would consider one diploma. So again, the wording here is, it's important, right? It's sunset diploma assessment requirements for all students. So some students will still be able to take care, use the assessment as their sort of exit. Again, some learning expectations, more with support networks. Fully scaling it up, you can see that it's gonna be phased in. So it's entered grade nine in 2029, thirty. So that means it's gonna take a while before it's really accessible to like all students. So new transcript requirements, you're gonna have to have some things there. Support networks continuing to grow. And there's the overall timeline just sort of on one page. So that's a lot that's gonna happen in the next four to five years, but there's still, still very, very much in sort of, not so much the planning stage, because we're there, but really the, like, what does this really look like stage? And that's all I have.
Thank you. That's a lot. You got through it very quickly. Does anyone have questions for Dave? Bob?
I think I know the answer to this, but on some of the earlier slides, like number eleven, when you did the different classes, there was an asterisk next to seven and eight. Is that because there were so many opt-outs that you're just sort of calling attention?
That's, that's the Regents exams. So for seventh grade, again, we have, this is only for math. For seventh grade, we have about sixty percent of our students take the assessment, twenty percent opt-out, twenty percent take a Regents exam. So when you look at the numbers, that's why there's two different slides. There's sort of like an original slide, and then there's an adjusted slide, which is where we take their results and their Regents and sort of back them into the number. Eighth grade, it's far more drastic, right? You got forty percent take it, forty percent take Regents exams, and then twenty percent are opting out.
And the asterisk is just designed to say, well, you know...
Because, well, because the state reports out two numbers, right? So they report out a number, only the students that took the seventh grade exam or the eighth grade exam. Then they say, okay, now here's an adjusted number that now incorporates the students. Because basically what they say is, if a student got an eighty-five or better on the Regents exam, they would have gotten a four on the state test. So they kind of take all those kids and put them in a four bucket. And if you got sixty-five to eighty-four, you probably would have gotten a three on the eighth grade test, so we'll put you in that bucket. Same thing for the kids that take the geometry exam, but that's sort of where that comes from. So they report it out separately.
Okay. And then just, I don't wanna put you on the, it was slide thirty-seven, and you had, I think it was some science results. And you had said, well, you know, we identified that, we can work on some things. And I'm just wondering, when you identify something, like you have a result, you've got a data result, how does that translate generally? I mean, you don't have to say specifically for that, but how does that translate then into sort of educational changes or enhancements?
So I'll speak in generic terms, and I'll talk a little bit more directly about science, because it's sort of a different beast. So in generic terms, when we get the test data, what we typically do is we look at sort of item by item, how our students did on those items, and then how they did comparably versus other like schools. And if we see that there's certain items that were underperforming, then we take a closer look at our curriculum in those items. The easiest one for me to point to is when, way back when, when algebra was, or the eighth grade curriculum changed, we were falling short on, I don't remember what the exact topic was, but there was like four questions on that topic, and we were well below everybody else. And then when we took a look at our maps, we were like, wait, we're only spending like two weeks on this topic, right? And it was tested quite heavily. And then there was another topic that really wasn't all that important in terms of testing or when you read the standards themselves. It wasn't a major topic, and we were spending like three weeks on that one. We were like, wait a minute, why are we spending so much time on something that's really a minor standard, not assessed? Something that's labeled a major standard and is assessed a lot. And we changed our scope and sequence. In the following year, we saw a huge bump on that item. So that's kind of in generic terms how we do it. Science is a larger discussion. I'm actually on the statewide committee that we've had, we had three conversations with the state this summer. There was huge outcry across the state on the construct of the exam. Like I said, many schools saw average student time on task, four hours, which is completely unacceptable for a fifth grader. How long is the bar exam? Not, right? I mean, four hours is pretty long for a fifth grader to be sitting. And then the readability. Science gets a little tricky with readability, because if you do it purely based on just some of the ways they do this, like one way is almost kind of like syllable counts. Well, science has a lot of technical terms in it, right? So that, you can't count the fact that a scientific term increases the readability level. So you kind of have to strip those out and then look at the rest of the readability. And that's something that they're taking a close look at, because the, just the design of the test itself was a challenge. That said, there's still areas that we have to take a look at, because we were still only in, I think it was the eighty-second percentile, right? The eighth grade, we knocked out of the park. The fifth grade, there's still things we're gonna have to adjust and...
But the data that you get back from that test is granular enough
Sure.
that you can actually look where the kids were successful and less so.
So we get item-by-item analysis. We can also, because it's computer-based, we can, so let's say we determined that there was a certain item that a lot of kids fell short on, and it wasn't multiple choice, it was free response. We can actually go in and look at every student's free response question and kind of see like, why are they all, like, why is the average score a one out of three? Like, start looking at the students that scored zeros and ones, and what are they doing that's falling short? Sometimes it's just, we need to train them better in terms of the amount of detail that they need to provide. Sometimes it's a standard that we just didn't teach well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, thank you. Every year that I've listened to your presentation, I have been incredibly impressed by all of the different data sources that you pull together and the way that you're able to put it together and present it, both in-depth and in a way that is, gives a tremendous overview. So thank you very much for that. I'm wondering, there were a couple of things, but one that jumps out, when you're looking ahead to what's coming down the road from the state, one of the things that I've heard discussed is, as you said, you know, moving away from Regents as a requirement, although still offering that as an option. But then this concept of, we're gonna have one diploma statewide, and also, there are gonna be all these different seals that students could earn. Would you speak a little bit to what that means or what that might look like on the ground, or what types of seals, and just kind of unpack that a little bit more?
I mean, I wish I knew more. It's still so much in the planning stages. But, you know, some of the conversations I know they've had is students that might have, well, let me back up a little bit. So one of the things they're looking to move away from, say, is instead of saying you have to have three math classes and three science classes, it might be you need to take six STEM courses, right?
To earn a particular seal, to earn...
Or no, just maybe that might be the way the local diploma, the one diploma's gonna work. Same thing with on the other side. Instead of four English and four social studies, maybe it's eight humanities courses.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Like, those are the types of discussions that are happening. Until they flesh all that out, it's hard to know what these different seals are gonna look like. I mean, I think the obvious ones are some of the CTE ones, but I think you're also going to have ones in, like, we already have the Seal of Civic Readiness and the Seal of Biliteracy. I could see things along the Seal of Research, the Seal of, you know...
So is this essentially an opportunity for credentialing or for getting more in-depth in a particular, for a student to really dive into a particular area of study? Is that what this is?
I think that's a piece of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you. That's...
It's so preliminary, but I think that's sort of the direction. And people are also looking towards, again, more project-based learning opportunities, which then gets you into more, like, some of the CTE things, some of the, on the STEM side, or even the exploratory arts side, just way more creative ways of demonstrating proficiency, which then might lead to different types of seals.
I think this is, I think it's really exciting what the state is doing, and I think I'm really excited to see what Bethlehem can do with this guidance as well, because we have so many students who are diving deep both in school and then out in their other, in their other work throughout the community in this area or that area, and to be able to lift that up and to support that learning is really, really neat. So thanks.
One question on the opt-out percentages. Any thoughts on what the jump is from, you know, sixth grade at nine percent to eighth grade, twenty-one percent of that? Because they take a different track, or is that a student choice, family choice, or...
I'm sort of at a loss for why seventh and eighth grade is still so high. Like, the whole opt-out movement started when the AP PR process started, but we're to the point now where like, the cohort of kids that were sort of in that mess where like everybody was opting out, it was like, like every grade level was twenty percent. Those kids are all like high school and beyond now. So why seventh and eighth grades sort of remains as a sort of anomaly, I don't know.
That's just taking no tests at all. They're not on a different track to take a different test.
Yeah, I can't, I really don't know why students, I think part of it is students are like, I don't want to take them, and so they don't. There's a little bit of that. I also think that, like, once, so it's interesting, because a lot of times, like on day one, our opt-out rate might only be like ten percent, say. And then that ten percent sort of, well, wait a minute, you didn't take it, and then kids go home. Our opt-out rate typically goes up on day two for those two grades. I'll just leave it at that. So.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for the effort to get more follow-up data. Appreciate that. It'd be really cool if we can think of a method, whether like parent emails or something, to follow beyond universities or other non-university tracks.
Yeah.
Ideally, you'd then be able to correlate that back, right, with what happened to these kids' high school that was successful, you know, on average. But I appreciate the effort.
Yeah, and one of the things I keep hoping to integrate, and I gotta, I guess, work a little bit closer with BOCES in order to be able to do this, is our students that are in the CTE programs, we should be celebrating those during this presentation as well.
Yeah. There's a small decline, but it seems to be pretty consistent in college enrollment. Real noise? Any thoughts?
I mean, I think that's, talking to colleges, right, they're, they're struggling with enrollment. It's, this past year, they finally saw a sort of an uptick again, but there was a four-to-five-year trend where enrollment was going down. They're just starting to see an incline again. I think, I think it's a couple of things. I think economics plays a part of it. But I also think there's more and more opportunities now to make good money without doing the traditional college route, and I do think students are taking advantage of that.
Maybe increase awareness, student debt, too.
Yeah, well, yeah. That's why I'm, I wanna say the economics of it, yeah, that's...
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on an agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through five. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through six.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one brief comment, just, you know, items three and four are two teachers taking an overload, helping with a curriculum issue. I just wanna say, appreciate that, I'm gonna be still doing that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through six. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through four.
I'd like to separate out part of item two, if that's possible, or item two by itself, or whichever you wanna do.
We could, you could separate item two.
Go ahead and do that.
Okay. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve action items, one, three, and four. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? And then it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve action item two. So moved?
Second.
And discussion?
Yeah, and the issue is, this includes, you know, the rubber stamp, or the fine rubber stamp, I guess, on the lab school process, which I oppose. The rest of it looks great. The new classes are great, but if it's only presented as one item, I'm gonna vote against it. I don't expect it not to pass. But if you wanna separate that out, that's entirely fine, too.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions that carries? Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. On Monday, November twenty-fifth, at six o'clock, we have a policy committee meeting in the district office. And our next board meeting is on Wednesday, December fourth, anticipating executive session at six and reconvening to open session at seven, and that is back at the high school. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.